Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the Mentally Business Meeting of Athens Clark County Unified Government. We appreciate your interest and your attention to your county government. Their agenda is in the hall just to the right of the door on a table for any of you that are here with us tonight that would like to follow along with the agenda. If you're watching remotely, either on TV or online, you can get an agenda from athensclarkcounty.com. And for those of you tonight, if you have a cellphone or any other electronic device, I ask you please to turn it off or to silent. Can you all hear okay?
No.
Okay. Want to make sure.
No. The answer is no. I can hardly hear you.
Jeff, we may be having some sound problems because commissioners tell me we can't hear. So I'm going to go on with the meeting and hopefully we'll get that glitch fixed. But for those of you who did not hear me, that if you have a cellphone or any other device, please turn it off or to silent. There'll be five opportunities tonight for citizen input. And I'll let you know as each of these, as it's time for each of these, there'll be items, and I'm going to actually take, change the order of our agenda tonight, and I'm going to put items number 17 and 18 first, which are public hearing on recommendations from the planning department. But normally, this is the way it works, that we have comment on the consent agenda, which are items 1 through 12. Then we have a public hearing on community development block grant, which is items number 13. And then old business items 14, 15, 16, and 21. And then we have the public hearing on our planning commission items, which are 17 and 18, which is normally the last public input. But I'm going to move that to the front of the agenda. The rules of the commission allow three minutes for each citizen to speak to any item. There's a light on Ms. Bratton's desk. It will be green when you start. It turns yellow in two and a half minutes. And I ask that you please have your comments ready or finished by the time it turns red, so that there's no need to interrupt you. If anyone brought handouts tonight they won't share with us, if you just give them this barely, and you'll make sure that we get them. Ms. Bratton, will you call the roll for us, please?
Jefferson, Sims.
Here.
Link, here. Wright. Bailey.
Present.
I'm sorry. I got distracted. Neesmith.
Present.
Vale.
Here.
Harrod.
Present.
Derricks.
Here.
And Handby.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, March 7th, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're now going to move to our public hearing and deliberation on recommendations from our planning department, and that's items number 17 and 18. And for many of you here tonight, that is on the rezoning hearing. And I'm going to ask, we'll start with number 17, and I'm going to ask Mr. Haney if he would come and speak first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. My name is Scott Haney. I work for Williams &amp; Associates here representing Rockwood Cottages LLC. You know, we set out this project on the, initially, we wanted to create something that was somewhat unique, an age-restricted community that spoke to a lot of the things, I think, that we hold valuable in this community: walkability, community feel, somewhere where you can really commune with your neighbors. I believe in this project, I do. I think that we're successful on a lot of those fronts. Unfortunately, in order to design in this fashion, it created what I believe is just an insurmountable amount of waivers. We understand there's limited support for this project, and for that reason, I'm here this evening to ask for withdrawal. I want to thank the members of the commission that were kind enough to take time to meet with us and talk about these various items. I also want to thank members of the community, Ms. Louise Hill, Caitlin Messick, who were kind enough to spend time with us discussing this project as well. Community dialogue is always important. I think that that should be something that happens on every project, something that was a little difficult on this one. I hope that the failure of this project, though, will lead to some greater discussions about design guidelines. I think to fully embrace the kind of design for community that we want to see in this town, we need to look closely at design speeds on roads. Currently, we are just somewhat lacking in the toolbox as designers to create spaces that I think appeal to these types of elements. So, again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate your consideration of this.
Thank you, Ms. Haney. And on planning items, we have opportunities for 10-minute sections. Those have to be signed up for in advance. And we had someone who signed up to speak in opposition to this project, Ms. Jane Sullivan.
I'm the president of the St. Ives Homeowners Association, and together with my neighbors, we were opposed to this development, and I'll quickly go through the reasons why. There's nothing wrong, excuse me, with the current zoning of RS 25, and there's nothing wrong with that piece of property being developed as such. Rockwood purchased the property with the intention of building a community for retired people, and we feel that they missed the mark in their plans. The zoning change plus the 10 additional variances in private roads was not really a true planned development. We felt like it was simply a rezone. The land is topographically challenged, no doubt. It's been bought and sold numerous times over because it's hard to develop. And I would propose that sometimes a piece of land simply is undevelopable. The landscaping that they would clearcut and grade in one push would damage a much-needed tree canopy, and no matter what they put in landscape-wise, it will never replace that. When we were first contacted by the developer, we were told it would be an active adult community. We pushed back on that because that could be anything. And then they came back with the rework as a 55-plus community under the Housing for Older Persons Act, just to let everyone know that that only requires 80% of the occupied units to have just one person who's 55 and older. It doesn't mean that all the residents there would be 55 and older. To keep that status, they have to conduct a survey. It's not done by the government. It's not done by any other entity. It's done by themselves, and they submit it to keep that status. If they lose the status, they lose it permanently. They also, hope also says that the violation of the status is okay if it's approached in good faith. There's not a lot of legal recourse after the fact if this goes sideways. This makes us question the real viability of the development remaining as a retirement community, as they propose. We do need housing for a growing number of baby boomers looking to retire here, but this development was simply to us a glorified and very expensive apartment complex. They were trying to be consistent with the retired residents in Iris Place, but this development offered no true amenities. A successful retirement community offers much more than simply a place to live and a pool and a clubhouse. Most, like the Columbia Brookside Retirement Village that's been built, are on a bus line or they're within walking distance of restaurants, pharmacies, and shops, or they're like Iris Place where they offer dining and transportation. This offered none of that. And with no public or private transportation available, these residents will have to drive. And just because I said one person's 55 doesn't mean everyone is that age. So their traffic analysis that they submitted totally is bogus because you've got people that could still be working till the age of 70, depending on who else is in the household. Their analysis of 3.2 trips a day in non-peak times is just not a true representation. Oconee Ledger has already done a traffic analysis and written about it with the expansion of the new Epsbridge Center where the Costco's going. They're predicting 11,000 new trips in that corridor. This will make the Athens Auto Bond, as we call Epsbridge Road, an even bigger safety issue. Currently, it's 45 miles an hour. In reality, it's closer to 55. This development was going to have a single entrance and exit that funneled into Iris Place, main entrance and exit, all with older drivers, slower reflex time. And then you add Holly Hills entrance directly across the street, and you have the makings of future fatal car accidents. Additional concerns were the poor remedy of a single walkway that served as their emergency exit and the inevitable use of private roads through Iris Place where their residents often walk. The developer overlooked the fact that this target market is approaching a fixed income years of, facing fixed income years of living. They have more medical expenses, and now they're going to have to pay for private roads? It doesn't make sense. That's a big bill for somebody. As a result, we were afraid that this development would simply become another transient housing development. We've all witnessed it where prices increase, people leave, original management pulls out because of dropping revenue. Under new management, they drop the prices in order to fill the housing, maintenance declines, and before you know it, you have another rundown section of housing. We live and chose to live where we do based on the fact that this was zoned residential single-family housing. We want you to honor that original agreement and keep this zoned RS 25. We don't think that leased duplex-style dwellings will enhance the area, nor will it be a viable solution to the growing retirement population coming to Athens. Overall, we just felt like this development had an overall negative effect on everyone in the Epsbridge corridor, and we ask that you voted no for this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Anyone else that wishes to speak to this item now is limited to three minutes. Would anyone else like to speak to item number 17? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail. Oh, is someone else?
Carl, you're welcome to speak, but Mr. Haney has already come up and requested a withdrawal.
I know.
Okay.
I'm here tonight, Carl Jordan, 185 Kings Road. I'm here tonight to talk about hydrology and the McNutt watershed because none of you lives anywhere near it, and also to discuss the numerous requested waivers that make a mockery out of our development standards designed to protect public health, safety, and property. Masquerading is a response to the fact that fragile soils and water are a public trust to be protected by our stewardship. Ironically, another project named Rockwood by Stark Hudson and his daughter Tiffany on McNutt Creek behind Stonehenge is partly responsible for enactment of our masquerading ordinance restrictions. So are Milford Hills and River Grove behind Snap Finger. So are Lantern Walk on Old Jefferson Road and Putter's Place on Jefferson Road. So is Discovery Trail, another Stark Hudson project on Barnett Shoals Road across from Rockin Shoals. We had had enough. Finally, look no further than Iris Place, whose springhead was obliterated and whose sterile soils, lacking essential carbon and mycorrhizomes, that 15 years later still cannot sustain vegetation. In fact, all that green that you see on John Williams' renderings require photosynthesis and are nothing more than pretty pictures. Our tree standards, the requested rezone from RS 25 to RS 8 allows the same minimal tree canopy standards as RM 3. Yes, the Rockwood proposal emphasizes that the perimeter trees will be conserved, but makes no mention of the disrupted groundwater that will no longer sustain them. Erosion and sedimentation. The land elevation's dropped from 720 feet down to 600 at McNutt Creek. That is, or if you only go to 650 feet, that's 70 feet of grade and a lot of dirt. And you can see what similar erosion and stormwater issues look like at River Grove and talk to those homeowners on Meredith Ridge. Dedicated maintenance. We assured that future maintenance of stormwater facilities and private streets will be secured by an owner-esque row fund offered as a condition of approval. Seriously, how secure is that? Require that all such common facilities be bonded for the projected lifetimes, at least 30 years. Such bonding would be real money and real protection. No homeownership, no homeowner should be required to waive his right of presumption in order for this body to approve a project whose horrors this government is dedicated to protect against. Public safety. The traffic numbers are contrived by HOPEA standards that may be little more than an empty gesture. Do not be fooled by the reduction from 11.2 down to 3.2 trips per day per unit. Public safety will be a huge impact on Iris Place and its vulnerable residents. Please send the developer home with the knowledge that projects like this may be okay down the road in Oconee County where the destruction of McNutt Creek is ongoing, but not here where we are in business to protect our water, soils, public safety, and high quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Does anyone else wish to speak to item number 17? Come forward. And please give us your name and address.
My name is Mike Oaks, 665 St. Ives Drive. I just wanted to echo what's been said previously, all these things. Most of these people in here, I think, would back them up as far as that's what they believe. But I think I heard the developer say that the units that would be, the ones that would be rented would be around 2,200 a month. They could come over to St. Ives Drive, get a three-bedroom for 1,200 a month instead of a one-bedroom, one-car unit for 2,200. So I don't think there's that many people that are interested in paying 2,200 a month when you could get a pretty nice-sized house for that. And then, of course, when you start, if an owner were to buy the unit, then if he moves out and he can't sell it, he wants to rent it, he could rent it for anything he wants. And then who's going to start paying all the road maintenance? There's just so many unanswered questions about that. And I've seen too many situations in the past where units have been built with the promise that, oh, it's going to be a fine, you're going to be very proud of it in the town. 10 years down the road, it was a slum because everybody just started renting them out. And I just think the right thing to do with the fact that we have very solid established neighborhoods all around it, plus the traffic problem, would be to not let this be rezoned. The last thing I want to say was the traffic. If you try to come out of St. Ives Drive at certain times of the day, the county has put signs and markings there where you're not supposed to block the entrance. But there's a lot of times during the day when you can't get out of it already, and you add more traffic to it. With the traffic that comes down, I think it was called Auto Bond, which is probably pretty accurate. If you try to go across it, going into Oconee County, you're taking your life in your own hands. And, you know, I would ask that this not be allowed down the road, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, I'm Annette Jordan, and I am the general manager of Iris Place. And we do oppose Rockwood because I am deeply concerned, and my residents are concerned about their safety, with a community coming in that we're just very unsure of what the future would bring and the type of residents that would be residing there. We take great care of our residents at Iris Place, and their safety is very important to us. And with the increase in traffic, we have residents that start as early as 6:30 in the morning doing walking outside for exercise, and this would be unsafe conditions for them. They're used to walking on roads that are privately owned, but they're not blocked off in any way, and they would have access to them. And I'm just concerned about my residents and their safety with this, if this community goes in. I just wanted to speak in opposition to it.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to item number 17?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Pete Conan-Camp. I live at 221 Tonny Berry Drive in Holly Hills, and I am the president of the Holly Hills Neighborhood Association. Given the fact that the developers asked for withdrawal, I'll just focus on one thing, and that I want to echo the fact that when my wife and I bought our house in 1996, we moved there with the anticipation that the neighborhood would remain single-family, whatever the RS 25 designation of today was at that time. It was RS 20 or something. And we still have that expectation. We constantly battle the traffic, trying to get in and out of Holly Hills. Winter Berry Drive is extremely dangerous without a traffic signal. And with every new store opening across the border in Oconee that I know we have no control over, it's only going to get worse. So with an eye to RS 25 and the fact that we do have these established neighborhoods along this stretch of Epsbridge Parkway for future development, I certainly would love to see it, and our neighborhood would love to see it remain single-family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conan-Camp. Anyone else? Don't want to leave anybody out. Okay, we'll come behind the rail. Would you like to start this mic?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll be brief. I think we had a big discussion on this at the agenda-setting session, but I do want to thank the neighbors from Holly Hills, St. Ives, and Iris Place for coming out tonight. And I hope this demonstrates to everyone behind the rail and developers along this corridor that, you know, certainly along the Timothy Road corner, Epsbridge Parkway corridor, neighborhoods are important to the people that live there. They have, not only do they have ties to the neighborhood, but they are tied to the neighborhood, and I think that's important. I know Mr. Haney's mentioned that there was difficulty in communicating, and actually there wasn't. There was very clear communication that, once the project was seen, that the preference would be for it to remain RS 25. And, you know, I guess I struggle with sometimes, what is our role? Do we help facilitate a zoning change that we know the neighbors don't want by holding meetings and trying to figure out what would work? And if nothing works, nothing works. That's why we have zoning, to protect the neighbors and the surrounding area around there. So I don't think it was difficult on that, on any neighborhood's part. You know, for a long time, the neighbors were asking, well, who owns this property? And the developers were saying that they wished to remain private, which is fine. But in my impression, if you're asking for a zoning like this, if you want to be a good neighbor, the first thing you do is go introduce yourself, and I think that's important. So, and I hope it also says, you know, if somebody comes to us down the line, I'm sure we're going to see more of this, senior housing, using that buzzword, senior housing. So are we going to just drop all of our standards to accommodate that? And I hope not. You know, I know we need senior housing. I know we need affordable senior housing. But I think we ought to at least make sure it's right and that we're looking 20 years down the road so that the next commission doesn't have to face the same things that we are in a lot of corridors. Bill, can I ask you to explain withdrawal and what that means?
Yes. Under the zoning ordinance, if an application for rezoning is denied by the mayor and commission, then the property shall not be eligible for resubmital for 12 months from the date of the denial. However, and also, an application may not be withdrawn or amended by the applicant after it's been advertised, which has been done in this case. But the mayor and commission may by a majority vote allow an application to be withdrawn without causing the 12-month waiting period to kick in.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Bill. And I hope that helps the audience members understand what the request is. And I'll support the request to withdraw. I'd rather we deny it because I think this is an important precedent to set, but I'm not, you know, I'm not, I think if somebody's asking for withdrawal, then that's fine. They have to start the whole process over again. But I hope if they start the process over again, they will recognize that St. Ives, Holly Hills, the Epsbridge Road neighborhoods, and Iris Place, and all of Timothy Road, really, are important neighborhoods. They're just as important. They deserve just as much consideration as any other neighborhood in this community. And that's an important thing. And what that means is you engage the neighborhood before you start putting out a plan out there. I've seen developers do that. They'll come to a neighborhood and say, what are you, we're looking at a project here. What do you think would be good for the area, good for your neighborhood, not as much impact, and good for the community at large? And that's the way that things ought to be done. That's when you communicate in a good way, in a successful way, that benefits everybody involved. And it's important not to come, when the project's done, and try to find ways to accommodate it or to appease people in the neighborhood and who may, you know, these folks are here tonight, and they probably would rather be somewhere else. I might rather be somewhere else. But they're here, and I appreciate that. And it sends a strong statement that their neighborhood is important, and I hope we listen to that statement. And so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to withdraw this project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to accept the request to withdraw.
Ms. Neesmith.
And I second.
Oh, I thought you had a...
Yes, and I went to every planning commission meeting where this was presented. I met with Scott Haney, who's a friend of mine, at John Williams &amp; Associates on two occasions. And yet, when I got a call from folks trying to get me to meet with the owner, I said, there's really no need to talk unless you've changed something. And the response was, you mean, you're going to make your mind up before you've seen it? Well, I saw it. I had made my mind up, and they weren't changing anything. I want to be clear about that. You know, as I said, Scott's a good friend of mine. We go to church, Jerry. He's a great guy. He's doing his job. He's done the best he could. I have no, you know, no qualms about that. But I want to let the owner and the landscape architect know, if they come back with something that wants changes, wants waivers from our land disturbing, land disturbing activity ordinances, our cul-de-sac, number of units on a cul-de-sac, our limits of a cul-de-sac length, or private roads, I'm not going to, it's going to take a lot to convince me that's something we should do. Those ordinances have a real reason to exist. And as Mr. Jordan used to sit right here, said, that we cannot allow continued degradation of our water and our land to continue with these kinds of developments. We've done a good job to stop it. Let's not let up now, even though our joining county continues to hurt our water. We have to stick with our guns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neesmith. Ms. Link?
Yeah, I agree with what Carl said and with what a lot of Mike and Jerry had to say. And at first glance on paper, there is a whole lot, you know, that I do like about this project. I like the compactness. I like the duplexes and this kind of more modest, scaled, compact housing in this walkable neighborhood. I feel like this could be a really great community. But after visiting the property and recognizing the topography, I'm totally on board with Mr. Jordan's concerns, you know, and I recognize that this would mean a whole huge feat of engineering to make this project happen. And, you know, it's something that I feel like, you know, there are other places in Athens that this would be a lovely neighborhood, lots of places. And I would love to see us do, as Mr. Haney said, and reconsider some of our design guidelines so we can make projects like this happen in the appropriate locations. And I do have serious concerns about the traffic. When I visited out there, I had a really hard time making a left turn. It was pretty frightening, and I was traveling at a time when there wasn't a whole lot of traffic. And to consider that, you know, there would be elderly people making that turn, I mean, quite frankly, they need a light right there. If we're going to encourage any more development on that corridor, we definitely need to do something about the traffic. So, yeah, I'm on board with the withdrawal, and I hope that we will, you know, take this to light and maybe learn some lessons as we go forward with our comprehensive land use plan and come up with some standards where we can encourage these kind of compact, kind of missing-middle-style communities.
Thank you. Anyone, any of our commissioners have anything else to say? Okay, we have motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, folks. And you're welcome to stay with us the rest of the meeting, but if you'd like for us to give you a few minutes to leave, we'll do that, too. to give you a few minutes to leave, we'll do that, too. Jam Thompson. Would you close the doors for her? Everybody, thank you. Thank you for your patience. Is this on? We're going to go back to our meeting now, and we're going to finish up with our planning items, which the next item is item number 18. So if anyone wishes to speak to item number 18, which is the text amendment with reference to public notice, anyone who wants to speak to that? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail. Anyone wish to, oh, ordinance, thank you.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to procedures, public notice, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. Anyone wish to speak to this? Have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve this.
Have a motion, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going to go back to our regular order now, and this is the time we'll take public input on our consent agenda, which are items number one through 12. If anyone would like to speak to any of those items, please come to the front, identify yourself with your name and address, and let us know which item you're speaking to. Consent agenda items one through 12. Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak on item number eight, which is the Athens-Clark County towing agreement contract. My name's Luke Turner. I live at 434 Firesite Drive. I'm the owner of Logan's Towing Company. See, the Clark County towing contract was initiated in 2005 for two reasons: complaints of price gouging, offensiveness, and general frustration with the towing companies that were on the list, also to obtain the most responsible level of service for police-initiated towing. And since my company has been working with Athens-Clark County, I've seen every one of my competitors' pricing for police-initiated toes printed clearly on the invoices. I've never once witnessed any price gouging or overcharges from any of my competitors. I've also seen other towing companies help each other at accident scenes. They help each other flip over cars, winch cars out of ditches, and even stop at accidents they weren't even called to, and help them grab a broom and sweep up the accident. Sergeant Lusk, who works for the Athens-Clark County Police Department, she watches over the towing business with an iron fist, but she also goes out of her way to help you when you have a question. In fact, I called her one time on a weekday, and she was at the beach, sitting on the beach, and she helped answer some questions that I had. Clark County is lucky to have somebody like Sergeant Lusk. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm proud to work with the other towing companies that are on the list. I do have four suggestions that will make everything uncomplicated, more professional, and nonpartisan for the towing business. Number one is to keep an officer like Sergeant Lusk managing the towing companies. Number two would be to create a leadership team, including the police department and three towing company owners, to make our whole business better. We could meet every six months, and right now, as owners, we have absolutely zero input on what goes on with the county contract as presented to us, and we just have to agree to it. The third thing is to go to a true rotation. Right now, we get six to eight calls per week, and they are back-to-back-to-back. Sometimes we have three to four calls going on at one time. If we decline one call, we lose all of the remaining calls that we get for that week. The calls will go to the next company in line. Every other municipality that we tow for is on a true rotation. I get one, you get one, you get one. It's safer for the citizens of our county and our drivers, so we're not running 100 miles an hour around the bypass in a 26,000-pound truck to get the next call in line before we lose the next ones that we're due. So the other thing is to, that I would suggest is to get rid of the 40-20-40 contract. There is not one company that's on the contract that is better or more capable than the others. If we went to this, there would be no complaining from other owners who think they aren't getting their fair share of the business. And these four suggestions will make everything uncomplicated, more professional, and most of all, nonpartisan to one or two companies that are on the contract. And right now, I think we should table this contract that will affect us for the next four years and come up with a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wish to speak to anything on the consent agenda, which are items one through 12? Seeing none, we'll come behind the rail. Would any commissioner like to remove an item? Mr. Gertz?
Did you say number eight?
Number eight.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Did we take off the one about towing?
Yes.
That's number eight. Yes, sir. Anybody else? Okay. Accepting...
Madam Mayor, I'm of adoption of the consent agenda items, one less eight, and there are ordinances to be read.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bearman?
In ordinance to amend the FY 2017 annual operating and capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding, if awarded, from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for expenses related to medication-assisted treatment.
And I second your motion, sir.
Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on now to, since we're out of order, I'm going to have to pay a little bit closer attention. We will now have a public hearing on...
Madam Mayor, number eight.
Well, that'll go to the, when we get to old business, be the first thing on old business.
I'm trying to keep up with you. Thanks.
Thank you. It takes two or three of us to keep me straight. We're going to now have a public hearing and vote, to vote and accept recommendations on the Community Development Block Grant. If anyone that wishes to speak to this, again, it's the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. If you'd like to speak to that, now would be the time to come to the podium and let us hear from you. Anybody? Okay, we'll come behind the rail. Any of the commissioners wish to speak to this?
I'll make a motion that we accept it.
Have a motion for acceptance?
I'll second.
Have a motion, second. Anyone wish to discuss or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will now have citizen input on items 14, 15, 16, and 21. If anyone would like to speak to those, this will be the time to come talk to us.
Hi, my name is Chris Dowd. I live at 245 North Harris Street. I want to comment on item number 14, the pavement maintenance project. So I was just down by Ben and Jerry's. They're doing Free Cone Day today, and the lines are really, really long. And I was thinking that, you know, on our roadways, every day is Free Cone Day because the people don't pay what would be the market price to drive on the roads, and they do, they inflict damage to the roads. But they don't really pay for that. The gas tax isn't high enough to pay for that. And I'm not suggesting that we raise the gas tax, although that's an option. I'm just trying to bring attention to the cost to society of having a car-centric society. I mean, there's a lot of pollution, you know, CO2 pollution, for example. I hear that's a big deal. Smog, there are accidents that, you know, kill people, right? And that raises our, that's a direct cost to the hospital if they're uninsured, and it raises our premiums as well. There's noise pollution, and a big one is inefficient land use. So if you have like a giant parking lot, you know, there's stormwater, it's ugly, and it's not generating any property tax really or sales tax. Whereas if it was some other kind of development, or even just a forest, it would have some positive aspects to it. And so, under the facts and issues, number eight down there on that PDF, it says, "This funding deficit," talking about the pavement and maintenance deficit, "will continue to increase exponentially and will be challenging to fully address in the future without a significant amount of new funding." And I just want to point out that, so you can kind of interpret this in two ways. You can say, oh, we don't have, this is, the roads are so expensive that we don't have enough money for alternative transportation, so we can't fund that. And the other way to interpret it is, you know, cars are so expensive that we have no option but to pursue some alternatives, and we can't afford not to. So I just wanted to, I mean, obviously, if we need to fix the roads, we have to do that, but I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Anyone else wish to speak to one of these items?
Good evening. My name is May Walter, 210 Morningview Drive, Athens, Georgia, and I'm here tonight representing the Athens Neighborhood Health Center as their board chair. And along with me, we have Melinda Craig.
And I am the CEO of Athens Neighborhood Health Center.
We just wanted to come this evening to thank you all for your consideration on helping us as we go through this recovery period of the Neighborhood Health Center. You have been great partners throughout the years, and we appreciate everything that you do to help us, and we hope to continue to be partners with you in the future. So we just wanted to come and thank you all for your consideration and for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, May and Melinda, and we appreciate what y'all do every day, too.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Elliot Coball, 470 Pine Needle Road. I guess I'm here talking about number 14. So I guess with respect to creating a more sort of bike pedestrian-friendly community and to increase safety for all road users, including car and truck drivers, resurfacing really should be seen as incredible opportunity. Last night at the East Pla Citizens Committee meeting, which I'm a member of, Drew Raisler from Transportation Public Works talked about resurfacing as, you know, this blank slate for the road, this opportunity to stripe road differently maybe than it was before. It's really the ultimate chance to imagine and reimagine a road and, you know, to build streets for all people regardless of their age and ability. And we've taken a big step forward in this community with the BikePed Master Plan, and I want to thank the mayor and commission for hiring Tool Design. They're a great firm. They'll do great work. They will give us a figurative and literal map for BikePed, you know, infrastructure improvements in the future, but implementation of that kind of plan will be key. It'll be absolutely crucial. And that's where this work actually gets really difficult. We can pass policies, but trying to implement them is where it gets really, really hard. And it's where we could use some changes in our current complete streets policy. I think some of y'all saw a message forwarded this week from Clint McCrory highlighting David Clark's suggestions for a change complete streets policy. And I think one area he emphasizes that isn't necessarily have to do with performance measure, or that doesn't have to do with resurfacing that is important, is thinking about performance measures. When looking at equity within complete streets, we don't want to see certain areas of town getting all the BikePed projects, while certain neighborhoods with less infrastructure and high degrees of biking, walking, running, wheelchair use, transit use, et cetera, not getting projects. So we want to have performance measures. But for resurfacing, you know, David suggested that all 28-foot or more wide roads really fall under complete streets. And that could mean adding at a minimum, or adding 10-foot travel lanes for cars and at a minimum four-foot bike lanes. Barber, Willow, North Thomas, West Lake, these are all FY 17 projects that are at least 25, 28 feet wide or more and could be striped differently this year. So I guess just moving forward, I'd love to see the commission look at David's suggestions and look at best practices from around the country. There's an organization, the National Complete Streets Coalition. They publish all the great policies every year. They're willing to come do technical assistance for counties to sort of help them through either writing or remaking their complete streets policy with equity in mind and with these kind of BikePed master plans that we're going to thankfully have in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dewey, 1075 West Broad Street. I'm here to also speak about item number 14. Who would have thought repaving would have been so exciting and so many people would have talked about it? But that's what it is. My colleague Elliot went over the details and sort of the, of the policy and the specifics pretty well, so I'll just talk briefly about how, you know, when repaving is done, it is often the least expensive method for achieving our goals for a more walkable, bikable, livable community, since the road is being repaved. You know, they don't put any lines on it, so we're free to draw the lines however we so choose, which is so much easier than having to go back, as we saw with some other projects, where you have to go back and grind anything down. That adds a lot of cost to a project, so we might as well get it right the first time. Of course, at the moment, as far as we know, the only, there's still the road diet policy that only applies to certain road configurations, and then we have a complete streets policy that doesn't apply at all to repaving. That only applies to a new construction or major reconstruction. So again, it's just, it's a reminder, as these paving lists comes up, that this is always an opportunity to expand our policies, to cover these situations, to make sure that we are gathering that low-hanging fruit, if it exists, and make sure we're not leaving any easy wins on the table. As Elliot mentioned previously, on streets that have already been identified in FY 17, there are one, two, three, four, four or five streets that the possibility exists for reconfiguring them to make them more walkable and bikable, if the policies were there to do so. And again, we also have the upcoming pedestrian and bicycle master plan. One of the scope work for that is to consider changes to the policy, but we know the gears of government work slowly. So, you know, it's something to think about now. How do we want to change the policy to make it easier and less expensive to implement the vision that we want for our community? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey. Anyone else wish to speak to these items on the old business?
My name's Carl Jordan, 185 Kings Road, and I speak in honor of State's McCarter, who could never pass up an opportunity to discuss repaving. But in State's neighborhood, Cedar Creek, there are roads that are as wide as, I think, 34 feet, residential roads, where you could use even the asphalt that's there and simply put lines and create bike paths and walking paths, whereas, yeah. My suggestion would be that those roads should be identified. That is, any time that we're looking at road diets, that is, three-laning roads that are currently four-lane roads, we always also look at the possibility where roads can, the travel lanes currently exceed 12 feet in each direction, that is, 24 feet. That is, are there opportunities to simply use the asphalt that's there and line off pedestrian walkways? I mean, really substantial ones where people can feel comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to come behind the rail, and the first item for discussion is, make sure I've got this right.
Number eight.
Number eight, that's what I was looking for. Yeah, I did, voting you. Item number eight. Who wishes to talk about item number eight?
Jerry.
Mr. Gertz.
Thank you, madam.
I'll come back to you. I'm sorry. Saw him first.
Well, I'll refer to Kelly, because he actually was the one that asked to take it off, even though I wanted to take it off, too.
I think everybody did.
Just, I guess I'll kick off the discussion. I remember when I had actively become interested in running for this office, was in the midst of that sort of Wild, Wild West era that, I think Harry probably was the only one here that really experienced firsthand, and of course, former Commissioner Jordan as well. And that, as we can see in the agenda report, evolved into the format that we've been using now for about 12 years. Seemingly, there's a much more pleasant environment out there, not only for the wrecker operators generally, but the police department and members of the public who have to have a wrecker, unfortunately, utilized... utilized because of their needs. But 12 years is a long time. You know, we gained some experience. And I think even as Mr. Turner acknowledged, Officer Lusk has done a fantastic job sort of maintaining stability. And so, the agenda item that's in front of us today obviously has been gestating for quite a while, given that staff had to put an RFP together. This went out for bid. They accepted those bids. They reviewed those. So I'm not recommending that we change what's going to happen right now for this cycle, but I would like to suggest that it is time for us to, potentially through committee, just take a look at whether this 40-20 and then kind of rotation system is the best one, or if there is some more equitable system that we could use.
Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with my colleagues' comments. I think that Mr. Turner made some good points. I have been lucky enough, and I think all the Commissioners have been lucky enough to get a response from the police chief, which was actually a very thoughtful response. And if y'all'd like, I can read the responses, but he made some good points, too. Basically, though, he would be very happy to listen to some of the, or all the towing companies and get some more input. The process we have has already been completed, and about as fairly as we can do it for now. But I think there's some openness to possibly changing it in the future. Some of the issues that Mr. Turner mentioned are really technical issues. We've had some problems with some of our computer software, and that's part of the chief's response. So I'm not really in favor of making a drastic change at the moment to what we've got. I think the process was done, and done as fairly as we can do it. I do think there's some room for, for some further discussion and tweaking and making it a better system for all. But I do appreciate Mr. Turner's questions, and I appreciate the thoughtful response from our staff on the matter.
Mr. Smith, now, come to it.
Let the mayor call him if she wants to.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I thought Mr. Turner's messages to us were very, very well thought out and made a lot of sense. How long, I'm sorry, I should know, but how long is this contract for, this for us now?
It's four years.
Four years.
It's two years.
It's two years of the two-year life.
That's right. Do we have the option to renew or not renew after two years?
Yes.
Okay.
And the chief's suggestion was that in the interim, you know, because we've gone through this process, let's, and people have fairly bid on this, let's go through with that. But during this time period, and I think Mr. Turner had a good idea about convening a group of tow folks and talking with them, learning more about what their concerns are, what some possibilities are.
Yeah, so we could do that beginning soon.
Yes.
Get the people together and start working on new ideas.
Yes.
Are you in support of that, Madam Mayor?
I am. In fact, I was thinking four years is a long time to wait for an improved product. But we're basically, we're going to be tied to two years.
Right, right. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's what I wanted to say.
Anybody else wish to, hold me still.
I just want to say, four years is a long time to wait for a lot of things.
Good things come to those who wait, Dan.
I'm not going to touch that.
Ms. Bell?
No, I wanted to respond, and I wasn't sure where to make a statement regarding this, but I have known Mr. Turner since he was a little guy, and you've known his, they live, we all live in the same neighborhood. He has worked so hard to get to where he is with his achievements, with his work. And he reached out to me about this, and I didn't know exactly how to respond. I wasn't sure, so I went through and read, of course, our agenda to study it and to try to understand and separate and differentiate the identity of all of it, because it's very complex. But at the same time, I respect him as a young man, as a young businessman, that I know for him to bring it forward to my attention and to Jared's attention, that there had to be some, some solid information that we needed to look at. So I appreciate us taking this and, and looking at it. And I love his ideas of what he suggested that we can do, that maybe can improve and make it what it needs to be in fairness to all parties concerned. But I want to thank him for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. Ms. Rowan?
Yeah, I wanted to add a quick comment, and I did appreciate the outreach that we got. Not only was it identifying some areas of improvement, but also with solutions. And I think that that is really helpful to improve what we're doing. And I hope that some of the ideas and improvements that can be made aren't necessarily locked in on the contract, and that there might be some improvements that can be made with this group that gets discussing what hasn't had, been in the same room at the same time to discuss. So I look forward to improvements that can come forward from the solutions that were brought forward by-
One thing I think we need, better be cognizant of, based on your comment, is that if we accept this contract tonight, we are bound by the conditions of the contract. So, but in the meantime, we could, we could have a committee working.
Right.
Hope possible for the next two years rather than four years.
Right. And if there's improvements that can be made on communications, that can be done outside of the contract. That's, I hope.
Anybody else?
One more thing, Madam Mayor, thank you. I'm not sure if anyone has shared the police chief's comments with Mr. Turner yet, but I certainly plan to do that. I think he will read them and see that the chief is actively thinking about these things, and we're going to try and find the best solution we can.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, y'all ready to vote?
You can get them.
You'll get a motion?
In a second.
Do I have a motion?
We have a motion in a second.
I move that we approve the contract as presented, and that we consider it strongly when it comes up for its renewal in two years.
I'll second.
Have motions, second in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number 14, which is our pavement maintenance project. That's right.
I just wanted to repeat a little bit of my comments from the agenda setting meeting, hoping that we can get some paint involved in the repaving project, so that we are maximizing the space that we have, curb to curb, and making the markings that can make it safer. And some of those details were mentioned at the podium tonight, but I think that there are improvements we can make with the width that we have, and that we can harness that maybe without having a specific policy for it, but in addressing that as it comes forward on the appropriate streets.
I hope so, too. And I don't know that we could put a policy in place before the restriping starts, but knowing what the Commission is interested in, I think it might could, there could be some changes.
Sure.
Mr. Neesmith?
Oh, I thought I was next.
I'm sorry, you were next. Hamby, then Neesmith.
Always forgotten.
Forgot what you wanted to say?
I did, I did want to echo some of the stuff that we heard tonight at the, at the podium from Tyler Dewey and Elliot Caldwell. I think there are good points to make. Specifically, I'm going to make the points in areas that I represent. And I know we talked about this at the beginning of the year when we first started approaching the resurfacing project. I noticed here Timothy Road from Atlanta Highway to Epsbridge Road, and I recognize that Timothy Road certainly is a narrower street than most, and also recognize, too, that some projects we've done in the past, and, and I don't believe it was Commissioner Bailey that I worked with, it's probably Commissioner Lynn. If y'all remembered on King, King Avenue, one of the things we did was we, we put some lines down to make the road seem narrower, and hopefully that was used, that was made as some sort of traffic calming mechanism. And there have been a lot of concerns along Timothy Road about the speed along Timothy Road, and I know our Transportation and Public Works is working to address that. But something, something of that nature, but, you know, and I hope it's not too much wishful thinking to think that maybe one day there might be some bike lanes along Timothy. I'll point out from Atlanta Highway to Epsbridge Road, certainly Epsbridge Road already has some bike lanes available to the use over there, so it'd kind of make perfect sense to connect some sort of segment if at all possible. And I'll say the same, well, certainly Baxter, lower part of Baxter was done previous year, and this one's going from Dudley Drive to Alp, so it'll finish up that project. And I suspect we'll see the bike lanes put back down there. I don't know why we wouldn't. And I know last time they had some issues with the, with the painting as far as not being adequately spaced, so I'm sure that that won't happen again. The other one I had written down here was, oh, Epsbridge Road, and that's certainly another opportunity there. That's a heavily walkable street and something that perhaps we could look at, also narrowing the lanes a little bit to slow some traffic down as you're coming down the hill towards Hobby Lobby there. So, anyway, that's what I've noticed so far.
Mr. Neesmith.
Thank you. Well, while we're on the subject of lines, one of the things that I have, my constituents remind me of all the time, Madam Mayor, they're your neighbors, is that the speed on Forest Heights Drive is unreasonable. And it's another street, it's very wide, where lines along the side would probably be traffic calming. So I hope we can consider that. It's, it's pretty dangerous. People are actually passing on that street. I've seen it.
I wouldn't bore y'all with the stories my husband used to do, the things he used to try to do to get people to slow down when our kids were little, so.
Yeah. Well, I have one, a couple more points. We're talking about this paving program, and it was brought up that our gas tax pays for this. Well, it doesn't. That's why we're having to do it out of the general fund. And then, you know, we're, we're about $23 million behind in street paving right now. We should be spending $5 million a year on street paving. We're spending $2 to $3 million a year, so we're a lot of years behind. However, as Transportation Speed Loss gets put together with initiatives on that, I'm hoping we will really focus and make a primary purpose of Transportation Speed Loss to repave our streets and get caught up. I think that's incredibly important, and I think it's something that the people need. I know we need it in our neighborhood, and I'm glad to see, my neighborhood's on the list, at least two out of three streets, so that'll make some people happy. It certainly is needed. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Gertz, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with everything that's been said by Mike and Jerry and Allison, and certainly by Elliot Caldwell and Tyler Dewey and Carl Jordan, and at our agenda setting meeting, Clint McCrory. You know, this is a great opportunity, and Clint McCrory referenced the presentation that we saw in January 2016, just over a year ago, and I'm looking at that right now, and David Clark recommended that we evaluate all resurfaced roadways at least 28 feet wide, looking at the travel length and the possibility of bike lanes. And I don't think we're going to make any specific engineering decisions tonight, but I would like to ask staff, as part of the motion, that they evaluate that lane width and possibility of bike lanes on all of those roadways over 28 feet.
Ms. Link?
I'll add my voice of support to that, and I want to say thanks to all those folks who are advocates, who regularly speak out about this. You know, we've got a lot of eyes on the roads out there, and we're really lucky in this community to have that. So I hope that we do visit that complete streets policy and kind of make it an automatic thing to consider these alternative striping mechanisms, not just four to three lanes with bike lanes, but other things like we did with King Avenue and Dougherty Street. I've crossed Dougherty Street pretty much almost every day, and the transformation there has been fabulous, not just with the crosswalks, but just the fact that the traffic has slowed down because you have those marks on the side of the road, marking in the parking. And I feel like there's plenty of room to do something like that on a lot of these streets as well. You know, I just heard from a constituent not long ago about the Plaza. We have one of the flashing Eurospeed signs there, but people still tend to go really fast, and they've already traveled half the street before they even see that sign. So that might be a place where marking, marking some on-street parking, or, you know, just some stripes along the side of the road could, could go a long way. And I also want to point out that there, you know, when, when a street's a little bit bumpy and potholy, people do tend to go slower. And I'm kind of wondering, what, is there a priority kind of formula for how these streets appear on the list? Because we do have a deficit. Do we simply just put the streets in line based on how old they are and their condition, or is there any consideration for the trips per day or the speed?
When they're bumpy and potholy.
It's just bumpy and potholy? Is, there's no TPD or speed limit?
It's the condition of the pavement.
Okay. I mean, I'm wondering if there's room to talk about those kind of issues as far as, you know, where we could move up some of the streets that actually, you know, have higher speeds and more cars traveling on them, so we could get some of the more high-priority streets further up, as opposed to, you know, streets that aren't traveled very frequently, and, you know, people shouldn't be going more than 25 miles an hour on them anyways.
I just want, I don't want potholes to slow the traffic down.
Well, so the potholes, regardless, they will undermine the road.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
So we will, anytime we see a pothole, we fix it.
Yeah. Well, I know about that, but I mean, just, I know just a road looking kind of bumpy tends, just those visual impediments tend to slow people down. It seems like whenever a street is paved, your foot gets a little heavier. So I'm just thinking about being creative on means of slowing traffic and making it easier for cyclists and pedestrians, and also having more open conversations with neighborhoods about, you know, what kind of traffic needs are in their neighborhoods.
Anyone wish to speak, before we vote? Mike?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Y'all should really see how Commissioner Harrod makes traffic slow down over there in Green Acres. You'd be amazed.
That's another move we don't want to know about.
But I did, I did want to ask, I did want to ask a quick follow-up question, Madam Mayor, to, and this is to Manager Williams, and I know Commissioner Gertz asked for some sort of evaluation. And I guess I'm just wondering, you know, how, how will you communicate that back to us with the follow-up, like I mentioned, some specific roads about, about that sort of, sort of activity? And I don't know how.
Well, what we'll do is we'll look at each of the roads. I don't, it shouldn't be too much work to list what their widths are.
Right.
And we can have staff look at those that are, that have a little more space and come back with some recommendations about how that might look. You know, there are other things to consider as well, besides the width, you know, the vertical curve, the horizontal curve, you know, safety along those lines. But, but certainly, I think we can go through the list, and I can relay that back to y'all, so you have, are aware of what we're, what we're doing.
Okay, that'll be good. Thank you.
Actually, if we just went back and looked at those recommendations by the former traffic engineer, our traffic director, and analyzed, analyzed the ones that can be repaved based on that. So, anybody else before we vote? In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do we have a, do we have a motion?
Okay, who, who makes a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve option 1A and B, and C, request a staff evaluation of those resurfaced roadways that are at least 28 feet wide for potential lane width and bicycle striping changes.
Okay.
One second, ma'am.
We have motion.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment. That loads that wide would also be looked at for sideline, side, side stripes to narrow the appearance of the road for traffic calming purposes.
Yeah, and I intended that with the lane width mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, I've recognized the same.
All right, so that was your intent?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are now to item number 16, which is our fireworks event. That Mr. Hamby would like, did we, oh, I'm sorry.
Tell me.
That's, they're both about roads. I thought we'd, I thought we'd handled. Item number 15, which is the GDOT Local Maintenance Improvement Grant. All right, any discussion? Motion on that one?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve option 1A and B.
Second.
Have motion, second, any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, well, you can talk about fireworks, Mike.
Sure, thank you. And I appreciate, I appreciate this being on the agenda, and I appreciate staff's help with this. And it just, it does seem like every year we are talking about fireworks and scrambling around to, to find a way to pay for it. And it's not that we, that Athens doesn't love America, just like every other community across America. It's just that we recognize, as a Commission, as a mayor commission, as a community, that that is, that it is expensive to do. It's a, we're allocating $40,000 to the fireworks, and certainly, certainly cases can be made about how we could, how we could better use that money. But I would like to point out, and I don't, you know, I mean, the, the positive aspects of having fireworks here in Athens is, is it does bring members of the community together. And I mean, and I know all of us back behind the rail believe that, and I do too, strongly, that a lot of times when you get to know people, your life improves and so deserves. And I think presenting opportunities like this for, for that to happen is a good thing. And I think presenting opportunities like this for, for that to happen is a good thing, that, that it may cost money, but the, the benefit in return is, is, is very strong. And also, having it downtown is strong, because we have some businesses downtown that will, that will benefit from this. And if the businesses benefit, then the sales tax dollars benefit, and, and that helps us as well. So, and, and hopefully, down the line, there may be some other opportunities to where we can make the same gesture on the east side and on the west side, so that all of the businesses in Athens are benefiting as well. But, so I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks for downtown.
Second.
Well, we, we actually have.
Option 2.
Well, we have two ordinances where our options are laid out.
If you look at option 55.
Okay. Option number 2 says, Mayor and Commission deny approval. Oh, ordinance, ordinance number 2. So do you include ordinance number 2, Mike, because we have to identify which one?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor, when we have the ordinance read, I'd like to say something, too.
Yeah. Mr. Barry.
An ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2017 annual operating and capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding to leisure services for a July 4 fireworks event and for other purposes.
Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that since Bishop Park is in my district, I have really enjoyed when we've had fireworks there in the past, and it would seem that, that I would be a champion for them, being there again. But I do think that, that fireworks make more sense downtown. Bishop Park is a beloved park, and it is a great place to watch fireworks, but there are some restrictions. It's incredibly hard to park in there. It causes quite a bit of stress for the neighborhood. And the folks who are going there, of course, they're getting to watch the fireworks, and they're enjoying it, but there's, there's no place really around there for them to eat or, or have any sort of, of opportunity to do any sort of, anything outside of the park itself, whereas downtown is full of opportunities. So even though one of the options was doing it in Bishop Park, I, I am very supportive of it being downtown.
Thank you. Ms. Wright, and then Ms. Link.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to make a pitch for, when we have this discussion for 2018, I believe that this discussion, as well as last year's, were in a timely manner, that they needed to be the general fund contingency. And this is a perfect item, I think, for hotel motel funding, so that maybe for 2018, we can be looking to have it paid out of that fund, rather than general fund contingency. But we have time to look at that, but it would be nice if we have a set amount in the budget for this, so that then we can be discussing the wheres and the other details versus the, the funding. And it, it does fit in the hotel motel category.
Ms. Link.
I would agree. I would, I would like to see us spread the hotel motel love around a little more equally. And also, you know, we do have some beautiful parks in this community. There are lots of places that fireworks would be great. And, and, you know, I agree downtown's the place to do them. We've heard a lot of outcry from our downtown business owners, and it was such a successful event last year, but, you know, I think there is room for a discussion about rotating it. You know, the folks on the east side, you know, we've got a great park out there. We, we had a fireworks event at Trail Creek Park just a couple years ago, and that was a great event. So I, you know, I think we can initiate a conversation about spreading it around a little bit.
Anybody else? Mr. Neesmith.
And the west side would like to have fireworks, not because we have great parks, because we don't. But because we need our, our commercial entrepreneurs to be supported by big events like this. So I too hope we'll be, be spreading it around, but we don't have a great park to do it in.
Anybody else wish to speak to this? Mr. Harrod. I knew you had to say something on the east side.
Well, I mean, I, I agree. I think, I don't have a problem with us doing this downtown this year, but I would like to have a broader discussion about sharing the wealth, because businesses across the county pay into our general fund. And I think if, if part of the goal of this is bringing people together, and I think part of the goal is helping businesses in terms of people going out to eat and that kind of stuff, then I think there are many parts of the community that would enjoy that boost from some local government, public money expenditure, and not just downtown. But the other question I had is, I just wanted to clarify on Commissioner Hamby's motion, whether we're voting for the option number 1, which is the $46,650, or option number 2, which is the $63,150.
And that would be a good point to clarify, Madam Mayor.
Well, there's two different ordinances. One, one has downtown, and one has Bishop Park. And Bishop Park has, and that's where the difference in the dollars is. But, but make it clear, you know, we're not going to spend any more than it costs, and if we get sponsorships, neither one of these may be that much.
Right.
I might just suggest that, that the motion be to approve 1A, and then B, in the downtown option, and 1C. Is that good with you, Bill?
Okay. Who made the motion?
I did, yes, ma'am.
Is that acceptable?
Yes, ma'am, it is. And I'll just reiterate what you've said also about, about the sponsorships. I know some work is going to be done to, to help attract some of the sponsorships to offset the, the cost of this. I know we had several major sponsors last year, but I also know that there's several people that would like to donate an amount that, that's affordable to them, because they see it's important as well. So, so I think having an effort like that amongst some of us will help.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. On favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay.
Madam Mayor, suspension of rules?
Thank you. Have a motion for suspension of rules, and second?
Any second, yeah.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. And under suspension of rules, we're gonna look at the Athens Neighborhood Health Center reimbursable grant. Would anyone like to discuss that?
Sure. You know, we all recognize how important Athens is, that Center is to, to our community, and the people that it serves. And certainly, this presents us an opportunity to help continue that service, and, and I would be glad to go ahead and make a motion that we approve, approve.
Second.
Option 1A.
Have a motion, second.
And B.
And, and I, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Andy.
You, you go ahead, and then I'll ask my question.
Well, I was, I was just gonna say that, that the two ladies that came to the podium a few minutes ago, came in and spoke with the manager and myself, and we had a very frank conversation about how this problem arose, and, and we both are very confident that they're addressing the issues, that this was, there's no, no problems with the organization, more of a timing issue and maybe some over enthusiastic expansion, but they're, they're, they're taking measures to do what they need to, to make sure that this organization's healthy, and I think it's a very good investment for us to make.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly support this, but I do have a couple of questions. So on, and they're more kind of mechanical type questions. So on facts and issues, number 6, it says that this is a $75,000 reimbursable grant proposed for a three-year term, repayable on equal quarterly installments. I'm assuming that this is a bit like a, a mortgage, in the sense that if they were to come into more money unexpectedly, they could, they could pay it down more quickly?
Yes.
Okay. And, and item number 7, it says the $75,000 will be used to make payroll and for other purposes until ANHC's pending federal grant becomes available in May 2017. Obviously, there's a lot of stuff going on in Washington, and the administration in Washington at the moment seems intent on basically cutting money, frankly, for poor people. What happens if this $75,000 pending federal grant does not, is pulled back by the administration?
Well, the, the federal grant's actually much more than $75,000. It's, it's on the order of 1.4 million, 1.2 million. I, I can't, we just don't know what's gonna happen.
Okay.
But I would say that, you know, I'm not, I'm not aware of all the things that are gonna be cut. You're right. You know, this has been a fairly stable program. This is, in this fiscal year, which I assume is already, the, the federal government's fiscal year starts in October, so I assume that this has already been approved for this, this year. I think it'd be the years going forward that we'd have to watch for.
And if this grant's cut, we're in a lot more trouble than $75,000. Mr. Gertz.
As Andy clearly alluded, we're in a chaotic environment when it comes to healthcare, and I can only hope for some future stability. And, and I hope that includes what we're seeing in some other states, that even those previously reluctant to expand Medicaid opportunities have, have made some noise about that lately. And I, I hope we see that in Georgia, because I know that would pay dividends for the Neighborhood Health Center. And the last thing I want to mention is to acknowledge Piedmont Athens Regional's contribution to the organization, which was mentioned. So thank you to them.
Anybody else wish to speak to this? Mr. Neesmith.
This is a loan.
It's, it's, it's a loan.
Basically, an unsecured loan.
It's an unsecured loan, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Barry.
An ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2017 annual operating and capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide emergency assistance funding to the Athens Neighborhood Health Center and for other purposes.
Thank you. Did we have a motion already?
Yes.
Have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. We pass that. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing deliberation. Never mind, we've already done those. Plan to mission. This, this is the time that any citizen who would like to speak about anything that wasn't on tonight's agenda, you can come up and have your three minutes at the mic and talk to us about whatever you want us to hear.
Hey, good evening. Good evening, y'all. My name is Bob Gad. I live at 134 Milton Road out in Winterville. I'm here again to voice my concerns over National EMS. It's the for-profit public service that now serves Clark, Clark County. It's also the company that you're currently subsidizing to be here. As a paramedic myself, for the last, I can't believe it's been 40 years, my concerns are about National, is that they routinely use the last ambulance in a zone to run a non-emergency transport, therefore vacating that zone. So they have a certain amount of ambulances stationed around the county, but they will routinely, regularly, and sometimes these out-of-town transports can go for several hours to Macon, Augusta, to Atlanta. And so the vote, the zones where they should be there for non-emergency, or for emergency calls are vacated, sometimes for several hours. So also, they refuse, National refuses to have a designated 911 division that would only run emergency calls, and that would be another big improvement that they could make. These policies, to me, are akin to playing Russian roulette with your citizens and puts profit over patient care, which I sincerely, I know it may be a strong statement, but I really believe it. I know I'm stating the obvious, but response times do matter. Seconds do count. I know this after having many cardiac arrests and severe trauma calls over the years, and time does make a difference. Also, in a recent conversation with an Athens Clark County police officer, he said the EMS response times, they've gotten so bad that if they're ever hurt, the police officers are ever hurt, so they tell their guys to put them in the police car and drive them to the hospital, don't wait for the ambulance. And I think this is shameful, that it's come to this. And finally, I sincerely believe all, all of us deserve better than this when it comes to our EMS. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gad.
Hey, good evening. My name is Sam Raffel, and I live at 230 Spaulding Circle, Athens, Georgia. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today about ongoing concerns regarding EMS response. I just want to point out that you can be in favor of National EMS as the 911 provider for Athens Clark County, and be against their policy of pulling 911 ambulances from their coverage zone to run non-emergent transports. Imagine National EMS pulling the 911 ambulance designated to cover the east side of Athens, where I live, to run a patient from a hospital to a nursing home in Greensboro. What if a child is hit by a car on Wit Davis Road and has internal injuries needing emergency surgery at a trauma center, and that transport is delayed because of this policy? You can say that it's not likely to happen, but it does happen, and the next closest unit may be coming from the west side of Oconee County. You can think about the 15-minute response to the cardiac arrest downtown last July, and you can see the potential impact of these Oconee County responses to life-threatening emergencies in Athens. It's unethical to deliberately increase response time to a medical or traumatic emergency just because you can, just because you think you can get another non-emurgent transport in before the next time critical, life-threatening emergency. When I asked a National representative directly if you would consider stopping this policy, he stated emphatically, no. I find that deeply disconcerting. I appreciate the fire department stepping up their response to medical emergencies, but I want to remind you that the National Fire Protection Association, which sets the standards for initial basic life support response, their standard is four minutes 90% of the time, and this is the service that the fire department is providing, that BLS or Basic Life Support Response. For advanced respond, for advanced response, which National EMS is currently responsible for, it's still eight minutes 90% of the time. If we want to expand the capabilities of our fire department to include advanced life support and the transportation of parents, patients, that would be a huge step in the right direction, but I don't think that's what we're talking about yet. In the meantime, we need to hold our ALS service provider, National EMS, accountable for covering their 911 zones and for not uncovering them to run non-emergent transports. We have many capable non-emergency transport companies that can handle that. They're local, and, and they're available, and I just thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
My name is Mary P. Bagby. I live at 1442 East Broad Street, Athens, Georgia 30601. I came tonight to ask the mayor and council to reconsider ordinances and change them for the safety of the people in the city. I'm having problems on my street with dogs and their owners. Speaking to Mayor Denson yesterday, she informed me that she could not advise me to pick up any type of weapon that I had available to fight off a pit bull, but that she did suggest that I should take my phone and record while the animal is biting me. Surely, she had to be teasing. That is not right, that the animals and the police have more rights than I do on my own property. The dogs from next door at 1438 East Broad Street, they have four dogs. One of them is a pit bull. The dog has come up last Friday and hindered my daughter from getting, getting out of her car to visit me. The dog chased my three great-grandchildren, five, six, and seven years old, into my house. Sunday night, I was going to prepare food for my chihuahua, and the dog came up on my porch. I have a broken arm, and I almost broke this one, trying to get the dog to leave my home. And Mayor Denson and the animal control officer, Mr. Adam Gardner, said that the dogs can bite me, but if they don't see it, there's nothing that can be done. I want that ordinance changed. I want that ordinance changed, because it's a sad day when on April the 4th, 49 years passed, Dr. King and other people were hurt with dogs. And it's sad that today, in 2017 AD, that I don't have rights, that my neighbors and their dogs have more rights on my property than I do, because if I cannot prove they are there. But I do have a picture today. An officer, it was Hughes, that come out yesterday. He came today. I was not home, but he left a note saying he had, was going to talk to me, but he was going to talk to my neighbor. But today, we have a picture of the dog in the yard, one of them, because they have four or five. Mayor Denson, I think that you were insensitive, and I think it's a sad day when the cops and the conin, and, and the canines or whatever, have more rights than I do as a human being. That is sad, and I want that ordinance changed, because I tell you, I'm not passive enough that I will try to use my phone instead of a bat or anything else to defend myself on my property that I have owned for over 40 years. That officer right there, I think his name is Officer Ball. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but on February the 14th, I had a problem where a man stood, because mostly rich students have overtaken east side, and this student walked into my yard and took his phone. walked into my yard and took his phone and had his dog, he's been harassing me, coming to allow his dog to use the bathroom in my yard. This officer and two other officers said that any citizen in Athens Clark County has the right to walk within three feet on that side of the sidewalk, inside my yard, and do anything they want. I tell you, it's time to change these ordinance, because I came to wake up Athens and let you know I'm not passive, and I will not be submitted to humiliation and intimidation by any animal, any animal, whether it be two-legged or four. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bagby.
Thank you. If I may?
Yes.
I'm James Bell. I'm from the late, great city of Lithia Springs, Georgia. I represent the Georgia Care Project. It's been 49 years, and Dr. King still speaks to me today. He speaks to me of justice. He was criticized for going outside of his community and his circle to go to other locations to speak about justice. I'm here to speak about that today. I know that the marijuana issue has been brought up many times before this body, and I know there may be legal issues with a unified government that's unique, unlike cities, individual cities. I want to give you a little progress report. Certainly, last year, Clarkston passed an ordinance. The city of Atlanta is set to vote on an ordinance in just a couple of weeks. The city, the tiny city of Temple, Georgia, is ready to deal with this issue. And if there's legal issues in your way, I'm here to offer a couple of alternatives and something that we possibly can move forward with. I couldn't help but notice your clock has not moved since I walked in the door, and time seems to stand still. I hope that we can move forward here, and you can help us. Mayor, you can help us. I know you support decriminalization. There's two things that I ask of you and ask of this body. Number one, call a stakeholders' meeting to have our law enforcement, the judicial system, the citizens of this city-county to come together and talk about this issue. The second, probably the most important thing, is a resolution in support of Senate Bill 105. And this was introduced by Senator Jones, Harold Jones II of Augusta. The bill moves felony upwards to two ounces. Misdemeanor is half ounce to two ounces. Half ounce or less would be a citation. This is dramatic. It still keeps prohibition on marijuana, but it is dramatic impact on people's lives and creating criminality in this state. So, I ask that you at least consider that as a resolution from this body. If you could pass a resolution, obviously nonbinding, to our state legislature. Senate Bill 105 went through the two committee processes. It went to Rules Committee, and unfortunately, time ran out. It did not move forward to a House or floor vote. So, it will be taken up next year. That resolution will send a solid message to our legislators that, city by city, that we're sending a message to our legislators, we want to change these laws. So, if there's any legal issues here that you cannot advance some form of reform in this city and county, then we ask you, would you please consider a resolution? And, you know, it takes a yes or no vote, hopefully some, you know, craft, craft some language that expresses our concerns. And I think if you polled your public and your constituents, I think majority may not approve of marijuana, but I'm not sure they want their children or their fathers or mothers to be shackled and be treated like a criminal and put in cages. And that's what we're doing with some 35,000 people in the state of Georgia right now. And I ask your consideration. Don't let time stand still. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Now, I ask you please not to demonstrate. Let's let everybody have their say without being intimidated one way or the other. Yes, sir.
Hello, again. My name's Skip Eckarts. I'm from Dewey Rose, but I represent Normal.
What was your last name, Skip?
Eckarts.
Yeah.
And I've talked with you before, Mayor, and I've been up here before, before your council. I'm running the normal chapter here in Athens, and we're trying to reduce the people going to jail over a plant, okay? These kids up here in college, they're working hard and all of this. If they go to a party and somebody's got a joint or something like this and they get busted, we don't want them to lose their scholarships. We don't want them kicked out of school. We think that this is horrible. As adults, as grown-ups and people running the community, don't you think it would be better if they just paid a little fine and were slapped on the wrist, instead of being thrown in jail and losing everything that their parents and they have worked for? All we're asking you is to take some time and think about it, talk about it, discuss it with the police, discuss it with the medical people, discuss it with the parents, the teachers. All of these people have input in all of this. We're not the ones forcing you to change. We're asking you to do something to help your constituents and to help the kids here. This is critical. This is not something that is going to go away. We're going to be coming back again and again and again until something positive helps everybody, okay? All we're asking you is to think about it and look into the resolution that James talked about, and talk to the kids here. Talk to the parents of these kids, all right? Thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and hopefully something good will come in this.
Hi there, commission members, Mayor. My name's Nathan Wasserman. I live at 200 Old Princeton Road, Athens, Georgia. I think it's really, you know, a really important issue that we look into resolving in terms of decriminalizing marijuana. Last year, I was taken under arrest and had to deal with the whole court system and everything, you know, because I had nine grams, you know, misdemeanor amount of cannabis. I've had friends lose their scholarships and have to, you know, drop out of college because they've been arrested for possession of a misdemeanor amount. So, you know, let me just ask you, you know, like, if your daughter or your son or your grandchildren were to be in my position, you know, I mean, how would you feel about that? I think, you know, just following my moral compass, you probably wouldn't feel too good. That being said, I think it's really important that you guys consider a resolution to support House Bill, or Senate Bill, excuse me, Senate Bill 105, proposed by Senator Jones. And I think that calling a stakeholders' meeting of the citizens of Athens Clark County would be a really good idea to discuss a parallel ordinance, if that's at all a possibility. I understand there may be legal issues that we might have to work around. But, I mean, we've got to look at Clarkston, Georgia, and Temple, Georgia, for examples, you know. I mean, Clarkston's had the parallel ordinance, as you may know, for about a year now, and they haven't, they haven't received any penalties. Nobody's been bothering them about it, you know? It's time we make a stand. Thank you for your time. I hope you consider what I've said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wasserman.
Attorney Commissioner, my name's Josh Wayne. I live at 86 North Avenue, apartment 44. And I'm here to talk to you guys today about considering what James has talked about and what my colleagues have talked about with making this statement that we're going to put our citizens' needs for safety first. And as somebody who founded Athens Care, we now have 400 members in our group, and there's a lot of people who choose to use marijuana instead of alcohol. There's so many people who get blackout drunk, and, you know, that's all right if you're 21. And I think that, you know, people are scared that they're choosing to use something that is safer, and they could still get arrested. And so, we know that in the past, we've come to you with questions that might not have been feasible. And so, we just ask that you consider our feelings and our needs for safety. And we think that these two steps, by talking to the state representatives and by giving us a chance to voice our concerns, we think that we can come together to make a solution that works best for Athens Clark County and also works best for the citizens, so that we can all feel safe. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne. Anyone else wish to speak?
Well, I'd like to also talk about the dog problem in the neighborhood. My name is Larry Moon. I live at 137 Holly Hills Court. I've had neighbors talk about dogs running loose, and I haven't seen a lot, because I work all day, nine hours, and I just happened to see one about 5:30, actually, two dogs running through neighbors' yards. So, I've talked to another neighbor, and she told me other people in the neighborhood have got bit by these same dogs, and animal control has been called, and I don't know what the consequence of that was, and law enforcement has been called as well. So, it seems like the people in the neighborhood of Holly Hills are going to try to get together, and when they see these dogs, call animal control and law enforcement to do something about this. So, that's a main concern, and I'll be calling, and I think another neighbor will be calling tomorrow as well. So, this seems to be a big problem in the neighborhood. And I know someone here had talked about ambulances, and the other night, I saw, I thought it was a fire in the neighborhood, because I saw a fire truck, you know, long ladder, and rescue response come. And I said, "Where's the fire at?" And it was like two doors down from where I live. And then, finally, the ambulance came. And I thought that kind of odd, that why do you need fire trucks for a medical condition? And I guess, you know, in case you have to get the heart started or something like that. But I didn't, went about the slow response of ambulance. So, I didn't come to talk about those things, but, you know, hearing other people in the community talk about it, I thought I should also talk about it as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moon.
How you doing, commissioners, Madam Mayor? I got a big issue on the...
Can you give us your name right quick?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Kelly Timm, two Ms. Live 1,000 Lakeside Drive. But my biggest concern is on the marijuana issue is, I'm not a perfect guy, and I'm not talking about for just myself, I'm talking about for anybody. But Mr. James brought up a great point about how you limit the, what it is as amount of the marijuana. I got arrested, and I was a passenger in a car, and I got my license suspended for possession of marijuana. It was a little roach. So, I lost my license for a year. So, that kind of ruined, in a way, how to get to working back. So, what I'm saying, if y'all could think about what he said, is how much it is, because if it's just a little tiny bit and it ruins somebody's life, like college, driving, I mean, I won't even driving, so I don't even understand that, but driving, I mean, anything. The point is, just a small amount will ruin a lot of stuff. But also, I want to go on to what they were talking about, the size of marijuana, is the roads. I ride a bicycle, I walk a lot, especially down South Village. If you go right past Riverbend Road, there's no sidewalk. And I was stopped by one of the UGAA cops, and he told me I couldn't walk on the road. There's no sidewalks on the road. So, and if you look at the ditches, you can't walk in the ditches. I mean, you're going, there's potholes, I mean, there's holes and stuff. So, I mean, where are you supposed to walk? So, I kind of want to look on that, too, with the roadways. I mean, because there's a lot of students that like to run up that way, all the way up to White Hall Road, yeah. And so, you know, it's just like, I agree with everybody that has said something here, and that's the only reason I even spoke up today, because usually, I wouldn't say anything. But I think there's a lot of stuff that needs to be addressed and thought about. And I'm, thank y'all for y'all's time, and y'all have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Tim.
Hi, it's Chris Dowd again. So, yeah, Athens, for everyone, has decriminalization on our platform, so we definitely support it. We think it's a good policy, trying to keep people out of jail, so I want to add my voice of support to that. And then, speaking more on the roadway issues, I think it's sort of the wrong approach to try to double down on sort of something, on a deficit that has been caused, in some ways, by poor policy, especially on the state and federal level. The reason why there's such a deficit in their payway maintenance program and other programs like that is, you know, it's like the state government doesn't provide any operational funds for transit, and like, what's up with that? And so, there are issues there that need to be dealt with. But I think it's the wrong approach to not invest at least equally in alternatives. You have to try to build the future that you want at the same time as you're trying to, you know, hold up the past, which is, in many ways, made by poor policy, is what I'm trying to say. All right, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dow.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. James Moy, 394 Oconee Street. So, some of you guys probably already know, I'm here to talk to you about plastics. Specifically, tonight, I want to talk about the idea that we have the plastics and plastic containers, single-use plastic containers, like plastic bags, are kind of an integral part of our lives, which is something that a lot of us, like me, who've grown up with them, kind of have just taken for granted for a long time. But some of us in this room can probably remember a time when that wasn't the case, before plastics were really even a thing. They weren't really, plastic bags weren't widely available until the 1970s, as a lot of you know. And I think all of us, whether we lived then or not, can probably imagine a life without single-use plastics, or at least with drastically reduced use of single-use plastics. I think that's completely feasible. And with Earth Week coming up pretty soon, I would urge all of you to think critically about this notion that we've kind of developed, that retailers are obligated to provide customers with containers for every single purchase. Plastics, you know, they evolved as a convenience. They were light, they were cheap, they help in a pinch if you forget your bags at the grocery store, but they've kind of evolved into this necessity that they really aren't, and that's resulted in a lot of needless waste, in a time when we're having to consider, you know, where we're going to build our next landfill, because ours is almost at capacity. And that's just speaking for the waste that actually makes it into the landfill, because as we all know, there's a lot of waste that doesn't get into the landfill. Some people estimate that 10% of plastic bags, post-consumer, escape the waste stream and end up as litter. And, you know, that's an eyesore for us as community in the Piedmont, but, you know, a big storm runs through, like it did yesterday, and washed it all downstream, and it's not our problem anymore, but it's still somebody's problem. And it becomes more than an eyesore, because there are communities that rely, their livelihoods depend on, you know, clean water and a healthy ecosystem, and plastic doesn't exactly spell that. And when plastics don't end up downstream, it's a pretty well-known fact that litter disproportionately affects low-income communities. You know, this is environmental injustice, and this is something that we have a responsibility to fix. Mayor Denson, you have expressed concern that plastic bag regulation could harm disproportionately low-income communities, but you haven't really acknowledged that low-income communities are already disproportionately harmed by the lack of regulation on plastics. A huge amount of unnecessary waste is being introduced to our city every day, because there's no incentive for us to stop. And this can't go on, and it won't, it won't go on, because our use of the plastic bag is a definition of unsustainable. You know, sooner or later, we're going to have to come to terms with that fact, and both as individuals, as people with, you know, habits going to the grocery store, and also as a community that can make, you know, policy decisions. So, I'm just asking, you know, why not now?
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
My name is Alice Hilton. I live at 187 Chitigo Avenue.
Excuse me, Alice, what was your last name?
Hilton.
Thank you.
And I also just wanted to talk about single-use disposable plastics. I have the pleasure of working with young children. I work with six-month-olds to four-year-olds. And with the weather being so beautifully recently, we've been going outside a lot, spending a lot of time outside. And, you know, being able to watch young children explore the outdoors, just like having like soil and plants and clean air, it's really, it's beautiful, and I love it, and I'm really grateful for that opportunity. it's beautiful, and I love it. And I'm really grateful for that opportunity every time that I have it. But there is still a part of me that occasionally can't help but think about the challenges that they are going to face, that I'm going to face, but also, you know, especially that they're going to face as we continue to make the environment less livable, less capable of sustaining human life. And even with those fears, even with that being a thing that is on my mind, you know, pretty consistently, especially when I'm with them, I still use plastic bags all the time. You know, I still drive. I still take showers that are longer than 15 minutes, because I am one person, and I really need the help of my community to make decisions, to have access to the decisions that create a healthier world. And I feel like single-use disposable plastics are one of the things where both the production and the disposal of them are so, so negative, and so harmful to the environment, so harmful to communities. And I feel like we, as a community, and especially you as a group of policymakers, as people who have the power to shape communities and to shape the way that policies are implemented, there are lots of things that we can do as a community that are very challenging, that are very difficult. I don't think that eliminating or limiting the use of single-use disposable plastics is one of those things. And so I hope that any opportunity that you have to be able to make that a reality, you'll seriously consider. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton. Anyone else?
Jordan Hobdi, 86 North Avenue, apartment number 42. I just came to talk about the marijuana issue again. If you would have told me the first time I came here, March 2015, to talk about marijuana, that I'd be standing up here April 2017, still talking about this issue. I don't know if I would have ever gotten started. I'm sure some of you guys would appreciate that. But just a couple, about a week and a half ago, I had the pleasure of being in Oregon for a National Drug Policy Conference, and the Oregon Attorney General spoke about how she was introducing legislation to defelonize the possession of all minor, or defelonize all minor drug possession, to help with the discrepancy in the rates of what, like, whites and minorities are arrested for, and like charged and prosecuted for drug possession. So I wanted to get up here and kind of encourage you guys to think about how drug policy reform can help the community in different ways, and just like a marijuana ordinance, and drug policy reform, and taking a harm reduction approach to helping the community, and not being afraid to, like, take a stance and, you know, want to help your constituents and stuff. So I just really want to urge you guys to not be afraid to, like, make a change and do some stuff for our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Jordan.
Hello, my name's Rebecca Rose. I live at 909 East Broad Street, apartment 303. And I'm going to keep it short. I just wanted to voice my opinion. I'm here with Athens Care, and there's a group of us here that you can see clearly, even though there's just a handful of us. I did want to just kind of say that it is a big issue that a lot of college students have problems with. I went to school out of state last year, and I was in a similar club there, where a lot of students are fighting to reform marijuana laws, because even though not all of us are fighting for it, a lot of us use marijuana, and I personally don't believe that it destroys lives. And I believe that when young people get caught with it, that's what in turn destroys lives, ruining opportunities for future employment, and other, other things like that. And I also just wanted to comment, and this isn't what I came here for, but the lady who was talking about animal control and the dogs, and I know that there are breed restrictions going on in other places around Georgia against pit bulls and other, like, violent types of dogs. But I just wanted to say that if you do look to change those sorts of things, that I don't think breed restrictions are the right way to go about it. I'm an owner of two pit bulls, and they're the greatest dogs. And somebody who's grown up with dogs all of her life, I can tell you, I've had more aggressive experiences with small dogs like chihuahuas than I ever had with a pit bull. And I think a bad dog is a bad dog, and to blame a whole breed is just discrimination against animals. So I just wanted to say that, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Rebecca. Anybody else?
Okay, we're going to come behind the rail, and I have a couple of things tonight. One, I want to announce appointments to Athens Housing Authority, and I'm reappointing James C. Smith for a five-year term. He's done, from everything I can see in here, a great job, and we appreciate it. And Sonya Fears will be the new resident appointment, and that's a one-year term. And I have one other small thing before I get to the rest of the group, and that's our Adopt Highway Proclamations. And these are groups, individuals that take on the responsibility of picking up all that trash y'all talking about. Athens Bit Body Boot Camp is going to try to keep Athena Drive from Olympic Drive, the Spring Valley Road, Spring Valley Road clean. Beta Epsilon Chi College Avenue and Ruth Street from West Daughtry, Street to North Avenue, R&amp;L Professional Services, Danielsville Road from Howard Drive to Berry Drive, Sigma Gamma Rose Sorority Incorporated, Old Lexington Road from Barnett Shoals to Whit Davis. And we really appreciate all that help. But I would really appreciate if people would quit throwing that stuff out from that pickup. And one thing I'd like to back up and congratulate and thank two people on our consent agenda. We approved the appointments to the O'Conie Rivers Greenway Commission, and those are two people that have served two partial, have served partial terms of two years, and we're now appointing them for five-year terms each, and it's Mac Duncan and Susie Haggard. And we appreciate all our volunteers on our boards and authorities, and those that are picking the trash up behind those that throw it down. So at this point, I'm going to see if anybody else has anything. Mr. Williams.
No, ma'am.
Mr. Bierman.
No.
Ms. Maddox.
No, ma'am.
Okay, we're going to see what our commissioners want to talk about. And tonight, I think we'll start with, make sure I'm doing it fair, so that everybody gets to have a start and end eventually. And I believe I'll start with Mr. Bailey, go clockwise, run the room, and end up with Mr. Nissen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that I'd like to thank Luke Turner for coming and helping point out some things, and of course, our staff having a very quick and thoughtful response to that. I am concerned for the woman that came up, and I'm sure staff took some notes, that was very concerned for safety with the dog, the neighbor's dogs. I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding on some of the laws, like the fact that there is a right of way that's public property, and pointing out that an officer is saying that. It's, that's not a good thing, to vilify someone who's just trying to point out the way our property lines work. But anyway, I would like for staff to look into that. I'm sure they will. That does sound like a very bad situation, and I'm sure our staff is paying attention to that woman, and we want to help her the best we can.
So did your mayor. Ms. Wright.
Yeah, the only note I can bring forward is that I would like someone to please visit Ms. Mary P. Bagby and clarify the actions that she can take, so she can take action against the dogs who are aggressively intruding on her property and her family's safety. They're clearly not being properly confined, and we do have ordinances to address that, and they've been currently updated. But I think if we can get some accurate communication with her about what to do, that would make me feel better. And I really don't have anything else to comment about, except for her situation. I'd like that to be remedied. Thank you.
I spoke with Ms. Bagby personally yesterday, and I actually put in a work order to Jean to have staff look into her situation. And I, you know, I'd be curious to know if some of these dogs are intact male dogs, because we did hear quite a bit about that at a meeting a couple of months ago. And I know the mayor has signed that to committee for us to consider some kind of restrictions on intact male dogs, because these are the dogs that tend to get out, and the dogs that tend to be more aggressive. So I hope we can kind of look more closely at what the definition of an aggressive dog is, and how we can, like, better enhance the safety for folks in our neighborhoods. And I also want to address the plastic bag ban, folks. This was an item that we actually had on our goals and objectives a couple of years ago, and it kind of seems to have disappeared into the ether. And in the meantime, more and more cities across the country and more nations around the world are banning plastic bags, a great many nations in Africa and in Asia. The country of France has not only banned bags, but also plastic plates and cutlery and cups. So I think it's high time that we seriously address that issue. I know the mayor just talked about litter on our streets, and, you know, we have these dedicated volunteers who go out there and pick up litter. Well, hopefully, if we get serious about some kind of bag ban, or even a fee to discourage the use of plastic bags, we will certainly see a reduction in litter. That's definitely what's happened in Washington, DC. And those fees that they charge there go to great causes in fixing up the litter, fixing up the riverfront, and it really transformed a community there. And I also want to address the folks from CARE. I mean, it's no secret that I am definitely supportive of marijuana decriminalization or some kind of parallel ordinance. And it's been quite successful in Clarkson, just down the road. The mayor of Clarkson, Ted Terry, is a friend of mine. And I want to point out, you know, the folks here talked about how the impact that an arrest for a small amount of marijuana can have on a college student losing their scholarship. And I'll point out that UGA lost several football players over the past couple of years, because these guys got busted with a joint or two in a car. But it also has a tremendous impact on our low-income community. Oftentimes, people get in these petty possession situations, and if you have access to funds, you can hire a lawyer, and you can usually get out of the charge. But the folks from our low-income communities can't necessarily do that, and it's particularly dangerous for our undocumented community. Because not only would these guys end up in jail, but they could get hauled off by ICE and deported, and have a family completely torn apart. And considering the things that are going on in this day and age, and how common it is, there's a real sense of urgency to this issue, if anything, to prevent those kind of activities and to keep some of these families together. You know, I have friends who work in some of our elementary schools, dealing with children who have been directly impacted by this in our community, and it's truly, truly heartbreaking. So, you know, this is a whole nother impact of a parallel ordinance or some kind of decriminalization to lessen the criminality of, you know, what is essentially, you know, a minor recreational substance. I like to make the comparison, you know, what's seriously going to get you in more trouble, a joint or a bottle of tequila? And which one of these is perfectly legal? So I hope that we can have a serious discussion about this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one item tonight, and it actually recalls something that I know this body spoke about quite some time ago, probably eight, nine, 10 years ago. And in seeking some level of neighborhood stability, there was discussion during that period of using a mechanism called a circuit breaker, in which we looked at the combination of age and income, those generally over 65, and those people making below a certain threshold, and freezing property taxes for those individuals. At the time, there seemed to be procedural or logistical challenges to pursuing that. But Fulton County seems to have managed to kind of work the terrain to make that happen. And so I'd like us to think about a similar mechanism. They look at about $38,000 for an individual income, and anyone below that and over the age of 65 would have their property tax frozen, not eliminated, but frozen. And I know there's some sort of parallel work happening around the county, certainly the West Broad group that I know Mike and Melissa sit on, is asking, you know, how they can ensure some level of stability for those folks. And the same, I think, would be true in many neighborhoods throughout the community. So something I'd like to put out there for us to think about.
Mr. Nissen.
Ms. Bagby, she didn't get me the other day. And, you know, we've been, we've been talking for several, several times about this. And I am concerned about the fact that when you've got dogs coming on your property, then that means that the person that owns the dogs is not managing the dogs. And that's something that we can do something about, and I hope that we will. And other than that, I'm going to say that's all I have tonight.
Mr. Tarrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two things, very briefly. With regards to ambulance service, I know that we have a work session coming up, actually, next week on the 11th, where this will be a topic of discussion. It's certainly something that I'm very interested in. I do have some concerns about the issue of running non-911 calls and not leaving any ambulances free to take 911 calls. So I think that's an important discussion that we need to have. The other issue of safety is, I've had some complaints about Whit Davis, people not stopping at the new flashing crosswalk that we installed down there. And I know that the chief is aware of this, but if we could get some enforcement out there, I would appreciate that. It's nothing like the salutary lesson of a ticket to make people change their behavior.
Ms. Bill.
It's been a good evening. We've accomplished a lot of things. Good night, from me.
Mr. Hamby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Andy used a word. I didn't know what it meant.
It's a GRE word.
I figured it was, so I'll have to go home and look that up. But, yeah, I've got a few things, just an outlet. On the topic of dogs, I'll get with Mr. Moon over in Holly Hills to get more details on that issue and turn it in to staff from that regard, see if there's something we can do to help with that as well. And I've also had an request, and I should have brought this up during the resurfacing, over on Old Epsbridge Road, if you notice you're going down that road, and if you want to go to Hobby Lobby, there's two lanes. You can go straight into Hobby Lobby, or take a left to go to Atlanta Highway. And I think in the past, that road that went straight into, or the signal, the lane that went straight into Hobby Lobby, there was an option to turn right. So what happens now is people are waiting to get, you know, one person may be waiting to go straight into Hobby Lobby, or more. I go to Hobby Lobby. So, but it makes it difficult to turn right if you're doing that. So as they're doing the resurfacing project, maybe that is something that they can look at, adding a way to turn right without having to wait for the light to change, right on red. And the third thing is, I served with Commissioner Dickerson on the Mission Athens process that's ongoing, and just want to remind everybody, and everybody watching tonight, that on April 20th, there is a, what are we calling it? Let me pull this up here, a community summit. It's from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Classic Center. And we're hoping for a good turnout, so that the turnout can provide input and feedback on some of the things that they've heard so far, as far as the community meetings and stakeholder meetings as well. So hopefully, y'all can make it and provide your input, or see what other people are inputting about.
Nissen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. About dogs, that is something that's actually in front of them. The Mean Dog Ordinance is in front of the LRC now. So perhaps we could get staff to provide us with some information about this particular situation, or any other information they could, about some things that we need to tweak or fix in our ordinances to make it better for citizens and clearer to dog owners, and better for the animal control people to enforce our ordinances. I think this might be a good opportunity to get that feedback and get something done. With regard to ambulances, I see an email. We had a dialogue back in September of 2016 about ambulance response time. And we were told that Chief Scarborough is on the ambulance--
Citizens Advisory Committee.
Citizens Advisory Committee, and that they will be providing us with data about response times. I think it's important for us to know how big our problem is, and so we can figure out if we can do something about it. So I hope that we get to see some data soon. So that's been a few months, six months, so it's time. And with that, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Yeah, we're going to executive, into an executive session, so I have to ask that we vacate the chamber.